It's five oh two, I call this work session to order. First up is art wall. Don't see our.
I'm sorry.
Snuck in on you. You are up.
Alrighty. Uh, I have some papers to pass out. Okay buddy, you would want one? Just give them here. Um, this is a pamphlet that my website designer made regarding the creation of uh, the art wall website that I presented. Does anybody else want one? And then, one more thing. Hey man.
Yeah, this one's a color. Oh, looks better.
Oh, sorry. Alright, so, I'll be going. So, um, good evening. Nice to see you guys again. Uh, it's been a minute, but I've been working on this for awhile now. I've only gotten more excited, so I hope you guys are excited too. Um, so just kind of as a recap, uh, my name's Avery Jura. Um, I was here awhile ago and I were, well, I'm proposing the idea of an art wall in downtown Whitehall for free expression of art, basically. And so I've basically narrowed down my proposal into a list of actions that I'm gonna do. Um, assuming that it's approved. So that it's pretty straightforward what would be happening if this is approved. So, I just kinda wanna walk you down to the, the second paper that I gave out. Um, you'll notice on the back of the paper is uh, just kind of a collage that I created of uh, some art examples that was requested at the last meeting. This is just a bunch of my own works that I put together, so. That's just kinda some of the stuff that I've made. Um, but obviously there'd be a lot of diverse, different styles going up on the wall. That's just some of my stuff. So, um, the first thing that would be attached to this art wall that I would do is I would like to obviously clean up the area, cuz the tunnel, I mean, it's nice, but it needs some improvement, so uh, I've got a couple of bullets here, removing waste weeds, leaves, and vegetation. There's a lot of like, just dirt on the walls and stuff. Um, and I'd like to create and maintain signs. Uh, I talk about one specific, like a rule sign later down, but just like, nice signs that basically, I'm gonna put like a trash can out and like, things that say to, you know, keep your, keep the space clean. Um, and then making like general improvements to the area, and I obviously will be painting on the wall if it's approved, because I'm big into that. Uh, the next thing, uh, that I would like to do is, actually I've already done. So, I've actually added two more people to my crew. So, a website designer, her name is Amelia Chen, she'll be a senior next year at Whitehall. Um, and she has experience creating websites for N H D. And she has created this pamphlet which has a bunch of information about the website that I'd like to make. Uh, and then also Brady Tate is gonna be a junior next year at Whitehall, and he's gonna be a new member of N H S, and I have appointed him to be uh, the caretaker. Um, and the, the jobs of the caretaker would be, so regularly, minimum monthly, um, check up, uh, the wall, make sure there's nothing, you know, overly inappropriate or, you know, not, kinda offensive. Uh, plan the annual cleaning, cuz I'd like to get that done every year. Um, upkeep the website and social media, although Amelia would be helping with that because she's the website designer. Um, planning events, outreach, um, if there's a social media account, uh, upkeeping that. And then also maintaining relationship with you guys, you know, keeping you guys in the loop about everything that's going on. Um, the next thing would be the website. So, I, I've given the pamphlet because honestly, I don't know very much about website design, which is why I had Amelia join me. So she created this pamphlet so that you guys can see, like, what would be included in that, and there's gonna be a, a price attached yearly, so I'm hoping that we could do like, a fundraiser or something, just with our N H S. It'd probably be like, between fifty to a hundred dollars a year for the domain. Um, but that's like, light work, I mean, we could just sell some paint for one day a year and call it a painting day, and make quite a bit of money for the wall, so. Um, obviously nonprofit. And then, uh, so then, the, the more jobs, uh, no, like, sorry. So then, uh, here's, here's just some bullets about the website and like the purposes. Um, contact information of whoever's the caretaker at the time. So right now it'll be Brady Tate, however, I'm, he's gonna graduate in a few years, so I'd like to keep that going for, you know, quite awhile. Um, so that we can make sure that this wall is being, like, kept up to date. Um, I would like to create like a portal for like a, like a, a public report, so that public can report like misconduct or inappropriate stuff on the wall. So basically, if, if you see something, then you can go to the website, which there'll be a barcode, like, at the wall, so that you can like, easily do that. Um, and then also, like a place where the artists can send pictures, because a lot of these art walls, um, they, they get covered up frequently, cuz they're being frequently used. And it's kind of, I feel, I feel like if the website is a, is kind of a place where we can share the artwork and then we can kind of immortalize it, because if it's, if it's constantly getting covered up, then not everyone can enjoy it. And then also, uh, I'd like to create a social media, so just something to spread events, uh, updates, artist profiles potentially, pictures, like I said, to immortalize the art, and updates, such and such. Um, addtolegalwalls.net, so this is just a website that I've used in the past as a street artist. It's literally just a nonprofit organization where you can go on and say that this wall is a safe place to paint, and it would be very, it's like three steps for me to just add this wall, so. That would be something that I would do. Um, I'd create a rule sign, so what I'm thinking is just like a wooden box, probably like two foot by two foot by, like, six inches, and then with a glass plate over the top. And then inside would just be like a bulletin board with like, the general rules. Here's the rules that I've kind of decided on with my team. No hate speech or inappropriate language slash content. Be considerate of other artists' works, and keep the area clean. Um, and the wood blocks, the wood box would be locked with a removable glass panel, so that no one can like, paint over it. Obviously, cuz that would be bad, so people couldn't see the rules. But yeah, that's, that's all I've got right now, so. Any questions or comments at this, at this time?
I have one question, right off the top of my head. Are we looking at the entire tunnel and the wall after it, or are we just looking at the wall? Outside, I, I'm not positive what all we're looking at to include in.
Yeah, so I get what you're saying. So for those of you who are not familiar with the area, the, the tunnel is alongside the bike trail, and then it also kinda like, goes off to the side toward Goodrich. Um, right now that, that kinda part that goes off to the side, I'm assuming that's what you're talking about?
I'm talking about the wall going, going the other way too.
Yeah, I, so.
I know that part of the wall's included in it, I wasn't sure if the tunnel was included in it also.
Yes, I'm just assuming that basically all of the cement surfaces in that area would be eventually.
Not sure how much that one wall's gonna be there, or how much longer it's gonna be there.
Well.
No, you're talking about, you're talking about the wall where.
Oh, yeah, not, not on West Kobe.
Not on, not on West Kobe, that property. So essentially, it would be, I'm thinking, would be from the tunnel to Thompson, or not Thompson. Hanson Street, like, Hanson, Hanson. Yeah, it's gonna be from the tunnel on this side to Hanson.
Yeah, because the other part of it is.
That's gone, yeah, that's.
I mean, with whatever work we're gonna be doing here, I don't know what kinda wall there's even gonna be there anymore.
Um, it would be quite a bit of wall, but the.
Not so sure that the person spending their money building, a building would want artwork facing their windows, so. I think we might have to leave that part of it out of there.
Yeah, definitely, I mean, anything that's not public, I'll include signs around the area to make sure that people aren't painting on anything that's obviously not, not part of the wall. So I'll make boundaries and make sure that people, it's very clear what is okay to be painted on and what is not.
The only other thing I have that, it's more of a, probably a personal comment or personal feeling or whatever, is you've talked before about, uh, you know, people painting over other people's stuff. And my first thought would be, if there's space to, still open space to paint, nobody paints over anybody else's stuff.
I would a hundred percent agree with you, and that's why in the rules list, I've just included, be considerate of other artists' works. So, I mean, I guess what that would mean to me, I mean, that could be taken different ways, but I guess the, the most basic way that I see that is just, if there's an open spot on the wall, then paint there, don't paint over top of somebody else.
So have you seen anybody in your travels where they have taken from yours and added to it?
I actually have, yeah, so I did a piece in, uh, I did a piece in Ann Arbor awhile back, and somebody went and created like a background to it, and it was kinda cool, like a, like a landscape, and it was pretty sweet.
Okay, cool, almost like a puzzle.
And I would, I could totally see something like that happening in the future too, like, there's a spot in Grand Rapids, um, near a climbing gym that I go to actually, and uh, every time I go, there's just something different, and it's just kinda like weird geometric shapes, and it's just pretty cool. Any other questions?
Well, from my perspective, looking at this, I think he's done a, a bang up job as far as going through and putting together the process and the stuff to give it to us.
You, you don't have a website yet, do you?
No, so, I just wanna get like, approved, make sure you guys know, like, are okay with the idea, and then I would go and build the stuff that is required. So yeah, I just wanna make sure that you guys are good with the idea first.
You've put a, put a lot of thought into the, the caretaking of this.
Yeah.
This project and.
Lots of troubleshooting.
Yeah, what I'm wondering about is, you know, in the, the long term going forward is, you know, people, they graduate and, and they move away, whether it's through N H S or, or somewhere else, is, is there any sort of, um, like adult, um, oversight or chaperone type role that would, that would be continuous, year after year after year?
Yeah, so.
Be the ultimate point of responsibility.
Yeah, so two things to add to that, first of all, um, my name will always be on the website, and I'll be, cuz like, Whitehall will always be my home. And I'll be a resource as, as long as this, as long as I'm alive, for this wall, and I'd like to be on that website for forever. Um, first thing, and second thing, um, this is now a W H S legacy proj, N H S legacy project, which means that it gets passed down every year, um, and so, uh, our, our N H S advisors, uh, right now Mr. Thompson and Mr. Kogle, um, are there, and I've talked to them extensively about this project, and they're there to help make sure that this, um, continues to be maintained over the years. And also, the people that I appoint will make sure that they have a successor when they graduate and leave.
Will the standards change from one, from one, uh, person to the next?
Um, well, uh, under my oversight, definitely not. But, um, if anyone had any changes in policy that they wish to have, I'm guessing that the person that they would contact would be you guys, so.
So when, when are you gonna have a list of the policies?
This is, right here.
This is, the rules.
This is what I got, this is really the list.
The last three bullets, Steve.
The other side of that colored, there you go.
Oh yeah, so what, uh, what is, uh, inappropriate as far as you're concerned?
I mean, inappropriate language, stuff that wouldn't.
Might not think that that was inappropriate, or maybe.
Um, no, I would, I wouldn't accept political statements, things that were, um, used inappropriate uh, language, like swear words, things that aren't like school appropriate, like children appropriate, anything like that. Um, like no nudity or sexual, sexual content, things like that would be painted over.
What about religious type content?
Um, I think that things could be said for either side of that. I wouldn't paint over something as long as it wasn't offending a specific group. So, I mean, if somebody made like a, a giant cross that was like beautiful and intricate, I wouldn't paint over it, because it's not offensive to anybody, or at least, I mean, outside sources.
Yeah, very, very much. And then look Steve, from on, what I've seen on here is he's gonna have a reportable.
Yeah, that's another thing, so.
What do they call those little black, dotty thing that you?
Q R.
Yeah, so on the website.
You can scan your Q R code and say, hey, this is, I don't like this, and it can come back.
It'll be a direct thing on the, in, in the rules, in the rule sign, there'll be a Q R code, and I'll have it very clearly so that someone can, um, report any misconduct or inappropriate content. So if someone disagrees with something, then we'll paint it over, regardless of what it is.
I don't know if I like the idea of somebody just going there and painting whatever they think is wonderful. I think that the, uh, design ought to be approved before they do it. So now, I don't know if that limits.
Yeah, I, I.
Or what, but I, I don't, because between the time of it going up and it offending a bunch of people and it actually being, something being done about it, the, that might be quite awhile, I don't know. Might be a month, might be three months, I don't know.
Well, Steve, this is going to be public space, which says, if you paint something tomorrow, and you go down there tomorrow and you find it offensive, you can paint over it. Anyone can put what they want there. When we've opened this up to public, we're saying the public can do this, not just Avery that's gonna do it, it's, we're saying any, anybody that feels artistic desire to put something up there can do it, and anyone that finds anything offensive can, you can go down there with your can of spray paint, cover it up. Right over the top of it.
Art is subjective, I mean.
Yes, it is.
That art is, is completely different than what I might think art is. Some people think that, uh, take a can, can of paint and throw it on a wall, and a different color here, and another color here, but that's art.
Well, not just art, but I think the words appropriate and offensive are also inherently subjective, and, and due to the nature of art, you, I think it's very likely you will get people wanna test the boundaries, and, and it's possible in the future that, that testing of boundaries results with discussions coming right back to this board, um, that's, the nature, I suppose.
And if we don't like it, we do a test around it, we don't like it, it gets painted back over, I mean, it's not like it's the end of the world.
Is it painted now?
Huh? Yes, the inside of the tunnel is painted now.
It's painted gray.
Gray?
Yeah, the out, the outside piece to the north is not, but I was just down there the other day looking, just, cuz I knew this was coming up, but.
I thought it was beige.
There is some sort of.
That was.
It's been there for quite some time.
Might I point out, it's not the most beautiful piece I've ever seen.
Is it, is it art, or is it?
It's just somebody took a spray paint can and.
Somebody's tagging.
Yeah.
That's what I'm concerned about, that type of thing.
What I've, what I've experienced, in my experience of art walls, is that you'll get, you'll get really big, interesting pieces, and then you'll get little things like that, but when you put it all together, it looks really good, regardless of how little talent the people who just sprayed their names is. The color and everything, it just kind of makes a culture and it looks cool.
It's almost like a changing mural.
Exactly.
Yeah, I'm, personally, I'm excited to see what happens there. I'm, I think this is a wonderful thing. I, I, I share your apprehension to a point, Steve, that I certainly don't want anything inappropriate up there, and I'm, I'm gonna be watching it on a daily basis.
But what you consider.
You might be painting.
Might not be the same as what I consider.
That's true, so let's, let's, let's you and I collaborate on that.
You can start.
You're close enough, you can check it every day as well.
You can make a collaborative art piece expressing your feelings, if you like.
I mean, I've never seen a Picasso painting that I thought was art, so, look what they sold for.
And how many places, Avery, have you traveled?
Uh, gosh.
Sounds like you do this.
I've been to at least six or seven different art walls, and I've seen so many different pieces all over internet, through my travels, and I'm, I'm just in love with street art.
So you've been to six to seven different locations yourself, bringing this stuff up?
Yeah.
And, in, in your experience, how many offensive pieces have you seen that would say offend you?
I haven't personally been offended, the worst thing that I've seen was just, uh, during times of political tension, statements such as like, help Ukraine, stuff like that. Um, that's the only things that I've seen that would, you know, make me hesitate at all, just because it's overly political, but I haven't seen anything like overly offensive.
What if somebody puts a rainbow flag up there and some people don't like that idea?
Then we'll paint it over, if they report it, then we'll paint it over.
Gives you another spot.
I, it's a cool idea. Because as, as the police officers in this council chamber can attest, there has been tagging done around the city. And this gives them, again, just kinda like the skateboarders and everything else, it gives them a place to go. Hey, guess what, instead of doing this over on KK's Car Wash over there, go down there. Gives them a place to put somebody, hey guys, we got a spot, just go down there.
That is a valuable point, and I've actually, in my research paper that I did last time, um, I actually did research on, uh, the Ann Arbor Art Wall, and I've noticed that the, the crime, I literally looked at the crime mapping over time, and like, the, the vandalism through like, like vandalism in general has gone down in other areas after the art wall was implemented.
Give us a kid to that age group something to do.
We need to get a job.
Ah, yeah, I would, I would certainly like you to, uh, you know, I think there's enough.
Positivity.
Enough consensus here that, I think.
I, I'm, I'm, I'm all for going forward with it, and when it comes right down to it, if, if it turns out in a year, two years, that hey, this isn't working out, how big of a deal is it to?
Repay.
I mean, we can stop it at any point.
And pay no, and just leave it.
At any council meeting, we can say, okay, that's it, we're done.
Yeah, but, but I don't know, I, I have seen it in other areas. Uh, some of the stuff that they've done in Muskegon over the, the highway and stuff.
That they paid for.
And I, yeah, I realize, yeah, I realize that's a little bit.
They paid no fortune.
That was a complete theme, you know, that was done, but, but it's, it's very attractive, I mean, I.
And it's a great location, it's unique. Where else can these guys say, hey, we painted under a bridge tunnel, I mean, or on, I don't know.
So.
I'd like to see where it goes.
Just to add, real quick, I'd just like to point out that I decided to name the wall Inspiration Art Wall, just because I think that's a fitting title, and I feel inspired to do art myself, and I feel that other people can be inspired by this area to do it as well.
I would certainly, so at, at this point, it would have to go to a, do we need to move it to a council meeting for official vote?
Yeah, Will and I were just talking about that, we probably do need to have some sort of formalization or formal approval.
I think so.
Looking at, um, incorporating a lot what Avery has already put together with the obvious stipulation that at any time a majority council says we're done, then we're done. And the artist will just have to know that that's, you know, the bottom line. I know the conversations, uh, council members thinking, have come up with the, the art wall, with the sculptures that have been put around the White Lake community, you know, who's gonna approve? And at that point, I think the city council, I don't know if you were on it that time, Jeff and Steve, was, should the city council be, be approving it, same discussion. Four might like it, three might dislike it, we just kinda trusted the artist and the process not to have anything offensive.
That would mind seeing more of that on the trail. So, al- also, I would certainly suggest that, uh, before you make any plans to do any signage or trash cans or whatever, you certainly connect with staff and D P W, I mean.
Oh, we're, we're fine with him cleaning as soon as he wants.
But I'm, I'm thinking, you mentioned a trash can, I mean, that, that gets a lot of bike traffic and foot trafficking, you certainly don't wanna, someone crashing into a, a trash can, or, so. Anything that.
Well, we'll try to adhere to all regulations of.
Well, just, just so D, the D P W and staff knows what's going on up there, going there.
So I, I do have a que, I, like I said, I think this is an awesome idea, I think it's gonna run real well, is, can we help him out with the signage, so it looks professional and?
Um, we can to a degree, I, I don't know if we need anything as elaborate as a wooden, as a locked wooden box. I think something that's, uh, weather resistant, um.
I'm just thinking a metal, a metal sign on each end, like what we got at the sliding hill and everything else, it just.
Pretty much something we get from Zorn Bosson Collin.
Like, yeah, like, uh, at the, at the, uh, splash pad.
Here's your rules.
Yeah, it's easy enough to have him put a Q R code in the corner for you, and, uh,
we can probably.
That way we cover that, and it's something you can, you can pay for your webpage, and we can.
I would like to see if there's anything we can do to improve the lighting in there, cuz it's not real good.
Yeah, I would also like to do that in future as well.
I don't know what that entails as far as, is it a different type of wall over?
Is that the state's tunnel, or actually, or is it our?
Not when it comes to spending money.
Is that a sodium in there now?
I think so.
So we run a couple L E D strips in there, we probably.
Yeah, and we can fund that with our fundraising as well, so. That'd be future stuff, I just wanna get it going for now.
I agree, I agree.
I just have a couple of comments.
Yes.
First of all, I think it's a great idea, um, I don't think that it's, I think him having a mechanism of deciding what is approval, approved or not approved is better than us being as a public entity saying what is right and wrong. I think you guys need to have, yourself, whatever mechanism that you put in place and keep us out of it, so to speak, and let, let the wall work. That's just my, you know, I don't, I, I don't wanna come, well, it, it's, it's not, in my opinion, as being public officials, it's, it's not my termination of what is offensive and what is not offensive. It's up to the public. And artists.
That's a valid point.
And that, that would be my one piece of recommendation, uh, going, going forward is when it comes to what is and isn't allowed up on a wall, kinda read the pulse of the community, because the one thing that would ultimately shut this down more than anything else is complaints coming into, I mean, not just us, but our successors in these positions, if, if, they start getting a lot of complaints, that, that might spell the end of the project, so. Kinda anticipate what those things might be and try not to cause that.
Yeah.
And I do like the N H, the N H S legacy thing, cuz that's, it's, it's.
And interact.
Yeah, it's, it's, yeah, it's gonna move, so.
Yeah.
Perfect.
I think that, uh.
We know what direction we're good.
Staff knows what direction to go.
Alrighty.
Okay?
Okay, thank you guys.
Um, probably nothing official till the.
Next council meeting.
Next council meeting.
Alrighty, well, I look forward to it, thank you guys again.
Thank you for all your work to put in.
Absolutely.
Next up is Deer Culling.
Uh, yeah, I'll, I'll do the intro, I guess, and it's all yours. Um, I did include Montague's, uh, Code of Ordinances, and on your desk, I'll call it that, Brenda's got a fancy name for it, um, is basically areas within the city, uh, where if we adopted the minimum six acres, allowing two adjacent acres to combine for the six, are the areas that, uh, Deer Culling would be eligible. I'm not saying approved, just eligible. The yellow is private areas, and the blue are public areas, again, those are eligible. That doesn't mean every area that's colored is gonna be allowed. Um, obviously, the city council would have a lot of say in the schools over, you know, their properties, as well as, you know, the biggest chunk down at the south end is obviously how Matt. But it, by the strict definition of minimum six acres, allowing, you know, two parcels to combine, this is what you get. These are areas where you could have deer hunting in the city.
It's pretty substantial, man.
It was kinda.
It was a lot, what I, what I was waiting for, and I looked at it and I'm like, oh, jeez.
Somebody worked, worked hard on that one.
I ran out of blue highlighter.
My, my only thing that I wanna throw out before.
Go ahead.
He, he runs with it is, uh, maybe looking at smaller than a six acre spot to make it, you know, available to more area, so we can actually call more deer.
I, I think.
Probably the. Unless there's a requirement that that, that is the smallest we can go.
Uh, you can, you can go down to an acre, um, you're gonna have pretty much the entire map colored. I think, and I'll, I'll leave it up to the deer hunters, uh, and the crew, and I'm smaller or larger, um, but I think the smaller you make it, the greater the safety risk.
Yeah. Uh, looking at this, I, right now in the amount that's available, um, if we just.
Uh, looking at this, I, right now, in the amount that's available, um, if we just, it, I wouldn't mind seeing it go to four, but I'm looking at this, six, right now gets us a pretty good chunk of property. I guess we could always review it, you know, bring it up for review next year and see how it goes. Um, this is a very, I, this is a very well-written ordinance from, I went through it at least two, three times just to make sure I got everything. Um, there's only a couple little changes that I probably would do and it just, for sake of saving the police department some stuff and us some stuff, um, I don't see why we would have to, um, issue a permit for every two weeks. I think we could do it for the bow season, which would, which gives you established parameters already. Um, the hu, as a hunter, I know I can hunt from November fifteenth to November thirtieth with my rifle. I know this. Um, so I don't really, to change it, to make another set of rules, is, I think, again, we apply KISS principle in this. Makes it easier for the guys and gals out there hunting, um, and we won't have to worry about it every two weeks. Um, that's under number B1, under B5. Um, Michigan has changed their rules uh, two years ago, three years ago, that you can buy, they, they, they provide X amount of, 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 uh, additional doe permits. You can buy right over the counter. Um, I don't see a reason why, if there are X amount of doe permits available and a guy decides to get three or four, um, that that's an issue, um, versus um, saying, hey, you can only get one and then the second one's gotta be a buck. Again, I think following the rules of, following the, the DNR already established rules that, um, I, I do like the idea of the first one has to be a doe, which is not DNR rules, but the second one can be a buck. Um, that is not a big deal or an additional doe. Um, other than that, I didn't see anything in here really that screamed and yelled that needs to be changed.
The other thing was, uh, there, theirs is specifically written, the Montague one is specifically written that you can combine, two people can combine.
Oh, yeah. Yes, yes, that was the other one. Yep, you're right. Um.
If we change that to.
Multiple.
Multiple, you know.
Three people living next door to each other and they come up with the right amount. I don't know how much that would increase or decrease.
Yeah, I mean, if, if you had.
And again, that would.
An entire block.
Yeah.
That, that all were tired of the deer eating their flowers.
Yep.
Um, and they all agreed, if that fell in the.
Within the hundred and fifty feet.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, you're still looking at the houses and everything else.
You have to limit, yeah.
And the roads, so far from the road, so far from the house. But, I mean, if you had somebody in town that had an acre and a half and, or two people that had an acre and a half and somebody else that had three or four acres and they all joined each other, I don't know why three people couldn't all combine their property together if they all agreed.
The hundred and fifty feet seems like a very reasonable safety precaution for the, the line of sight for flight of an, of an arrow.
Yes.
And, uh, I'm, I'm wondering, you know, if you got a ravine like Bush Creek where you, you're shooting very much down into the ravine, if maybe that needs the same hundred and fifty foot limit.
If you look at those houses, if you look at those houses down there though, they're, you're, you're pretty close to a hundred and fifty feet away from the house even. 'Cause my uncle used to live off of Alice and going back to his, back to his property and going to the neighbor's property across the way, that, there's a pretty good, if you went on the gully, the end of, not Elizabeth, where's the gully cross over here? One crosses down off of Livingston and then there's another one that cross off of. Yeah, I mean, there's a, there's a substantial amount of property from the house on this side to the house on this side. Yeah, so.
And, and the Montague one does say you have to be, you have to hunt from an elevated.
Yes, I would, I would keep that as well. Yep.
You, you're not gonna be ground hunting.
You're not gonna be ground blind hunting.
You're always gonna be shooting down to minimize, I mean, it's, you, you're always gonna have a possibility of a ricochet no matter what, but you're always hunting down, so, you know. That, that takes a lot of the air out of it.
Yep, and with a bow and a cross, well, they don't go.
So, the section, the section fourteen two oh one in here with regards to feeding, do we have anything that closely mirrors that currently in, in our city ordinance?
We do not. We depend on the state, uh, regulation, which is actually a DNR commissioner rule.
So that's somewhat redundant with what the state already privates.
Yes.
And you've got the ability to enforce that.
It's, gives us, uh, I'll say, a different vehicle by which to enforce it.
That right there, if we could get a hundred percent compliance, would be a step in the right direction.
It sounds, it sounds to me like they, uh, obtain a permit from the city and there's a fee. Do you know what they charge for theirs?
I do not. And I, I'll imagine, I don't think it's in here. I didn't see it anywhere.
I don't think it has to be expensive. I mean, they're already buying their deer license and they're, they're providing, essentially, in a roundabout way, they're providing the city a service because they're taking care of the deer herd that's already out, out of hand.
Are we incurring a cost that we need to reimburse for?
The only thing I could think is.
Processing.
Processing and them guys going out there and looking and making sure it's appropriate. I mean, I would keep it to a minimum, um, from my perspective.
Business registration is thirty-five. Probably about.
Break even amount.
About the same amount of paperwork involved.
Yep. I think that would be valid. If, I know, like I said, I've already had multiple people, especially the guys that work there, that have family that live in the city, why not? Like, oh, jeez, they all, they all know. So, we're, we're looking. And I think this would definitely hopefully fix the, some of the issues we got going on with deer destruction in the, in the, in the city.
There's a lot of the, uh, a good portion of the public, consider public property, is school property. Do, as long as you're not near a, uh, actual school building,
They would have to.
Do you still need permission from the school to hunt on that property or?
Yeah, you have to register a property in which you intend to hunt on. So the schools would have to come in and say, we're gonna allow people to hunt.
And I'm sure there could be some sort of provision with, like, not while school's in session, if that's the rule that the school board wants to put on or something like that.
We got a member of the school board in the back. Just turned her on.
He's, he's not acting today.
I don't know.
If I had to venture a guess, they're probably gonna pass.
They're probably, yeah, from liability standpoint, I'm, liability standpoint, I'm sure they're probably gonna pass.
Now, the County Resource Recovery Center does allow it, but that's a few thousand acres and there's.
A lot of room out there.
You know, two buildings, like, on that whole site.
And we could limit, I mean, if we, if we got somebody that wants to hunt, like, out at the DPW garage on the backside out there. I mean, we could limit, you know, the first couple that come in or the first guy that comes in and wants it, and if they're gonna continue to harvest, okay, you got first shot and then, you know, we, we establish a list, I mean, if we wanna go that route, but um, I'm sure we might have people on the, actually work for the DPW that might wanna do that, but I don't know.
But see, if you get, if you allow a certain number of people on there and then you give them the whole season, well, then that kinda cuts everybody else out.
It, it does. And, and you could, you could give them, you could give, uh, uh, make it a lottery, I mean, just like what the county does out in, Kim does in the county, do that with the wastewater still? Um, they allow people to hunt out at the wastewater, they have a lottery. You wanna do it, you have to have your, your, your request in by this amount of date. They put it in there and pull the lottery tickets and, you know.
Soil Conservation District does it by first come, first served.
Yep, yep.
And they, you know, limit it to a number of people.
Yep, yep.
Like, there's a twenty acre piece just the other side of White Lake Drive.
I know, I've been trying to get on it for years.
Yeah.
I don't care.
Takes the deer, so long as someone takes it.
The day they.
I know.
Open it up for you, you don't have a chance. But, yeah.
But I think, I think, again, I think this is something that's, that's easy to put in place and, and really easy to limit and change it and massage and make it just like the art wall, like we want. Um, if we don't like the, the first draft and it's not working, we can make it work. I mean, but the deer population, I saw a mama and a baby floating out the other day out on Alice Street, so I mean, they were already dropped and, so.
Yeah.
It's only gonna, it's only gonna double, it's only gonna double roughly every year, so.
A mom with twins right down by the railroad track, I have to.
Yep, so.
Well, I think the time's come for this.
Absolutely.
I would, I would, I would be very happy if the school board would, would get on board. I'd be very happy if Hammett, their nice big parcel down here would, uh, would be open to the idea. But whoever does or doesn't participate as far as property owners, I think it's worth going for.
And who knows, Hammett, you know, they used to have the, the shooting range out there and it was for their employees. And then who knows, Hammett may say that to their employees. Hey, this is a perka working here. Hey, we'll give, we'll let you guys go out here and do this. Police Department approves it, the city approves it, and you go, so.
Could staff possibly, like, give us a list of city-owned property that they feel would be okay?
I, I could probably give you that answer right now. None.
None.
Um, just because I, I think there's a lot of concern with, um, I mean, our property is open to the public. And if you start mixing bow hunters, uh, with the family that's going out there for a walk, um, I, I think you're probably running into a lot of issues. Um, even out at DPW, if somebody's out there hunting and the crews come in at two in the morning, I don't know what, probably can't hunt at night, right?
No.
No, daybreak to doc, daybreak to sunset.
Yes.
Um, and, and I don't know if Will wants to chime in one way or another, but I, I would have a lot of concerns because we're allowing the general public to be on most city property at any time they want, uh, for lawful purposes. Um, then you mix in hunters, which could be ripe for some issues.
I did speak with, uh, Mayor Montague a little over an hour ago and asked him how he felt this was working and he was convinced that it was working well. His only advice was to, uh, he thought it would be best if we kept it to ourselves. That we didn't make a big broadcast of it, 'cause the more you broadcast it out there, the more outside people are gonna come and.
Can we limit it?
You gotta be a resident of the city.
And is that? We, we were just discussing that. Unless we're missing it, we, we see where the property has to be registered. And then certain requirements and restrictions on the hunters. A, unless I'm missing it. To me, it seems like, you know, let's say I have six acres and I get my property registered, I, I still wanna control who actually goes out there and hunts, instead of just anybody.
And so you could say.
So I don't know. Pardon?
Montague does have that where the property owner has to approve.
Okay.
Who's a hunter.
Is that in the statute? Is that in the ordinance?
I, I didn't see it, but I think that would address.
That was part of the application process.
Okay.
The, the, the owner first has to come forward and said, I, I put this property up for, for potential use for hunting. And then the people that wanna hunt it have to essentially apply to hunt on that piece of property. And the, the owner can say yea or nay. That's certainly the way I would like to see it, if that goes forward. You could say, uh, them and their immediate family or something like that. I mean, you could go that route. I mean, it'd be easy.
Well, if, if under the, you know, section being the licensed hunting, uh, it says hunters can hunt subject to the following, one could be, with permission from the property owner.
Right, yeah.
Other than DMA.
Yep.
DMA.
Deer management. You had, or DMU is what they used to call them, but.
They, they have a lot of signage on those, uh, properties that are run by the Soil Conservation District. There's another chunk out here, the other side of Durham.
Yeah, there's a couple, yeah.
There's a couple forty acre pieces in there that they draw names out of a hat, or actually, you get, you get, it's first come, first served.
Does Montague allow on their city property? Do you know, did they, did they tell either one of you, Scott, whether they allow?
I don't know.
I don't believe they do. Cause, cause again, hunting since I was thirteen years old, um, come bow season, bow season starts October first and runs, we got people walking through state property, Duck Lake State Park is allowed. I mean, you know, the, the hunters are, for the most part, very, very good and very, uh, at what they do and take pride in what they do for the most part. And of course, you still have, just like everything else in the world, you still got a few, but knowing your arrow flight and everything else, as, as far as, so long as they're off the trail and everything else, I don't. Again, the city could approve it for X amount of people for the area if we, if we decided to go that route. I guess we can always look at that down the road, um, whether we wanna allow it, but there are some pretty nice substantial pieces of property owned by the city that would, or the deer happen to be, quite honestly. Um, deer don't travel everywhere, but, um, there's some pretty good sections, um, like off of Peterson Road out there that we own, um, that's a huge chunk of blue, um, out there by the cemetery. Yeah, like I said, we can, we can make that decision. I've been to numerous council meetings in Montague, the council actually approves every single permit. They know who the, who the, who the person applying is and where they are going to be hunting. So the council approves every one of those permits. And like I said, the permit, you can put whatever you wanna hunt, I mean, name, address, location, and cellphone number. I mean, we can add, make the application as, as complicated or as not complicated as we want, just so we can keep track of them. And I think they got it in there that.
Well, doesn't it say the city manager or the chief of police has to.
Has to, yes.
Allow them to?
Yes, yeah.
And then. Landowner too, probably.
And then I think that.
If, if between the landowner, the chief of police, and the city manager, I, I think you pretty much got covered.
Like.
You know.
They do a background check on in, individuals that are applying for a license.
I've got one question, curiosity on my own part, and I don't know if Chief, if you can answer it or not, but I'm not a hunter, but I do know a lot of times when you shoot a deer, it's not gonna lay down and die right now.
No, they run.
They're gonna run.
Especially with a bow. Bow with a bow.
So, if you were hunting an unapproved, unapproved piece of property and the deer takes off after you hit it and goes on to somebody else's property who is not approved and lays down and dies, are you allowed to go on there and?
No.
It's gonna happen. It, it, it's gonna happen. You have essentially, you have to get permission from the property owner to go and recover it. It's no different than hunting state property. If I own up in Merritt or Masti or I hunt, if I shoot a deer and it runs over on a, on a private property, I can't go and get it. I need to go and get approval from the landowner to go get it. And, I mean, quite honestly, who wants to have a, a deceased deer on their property? Hey, hey, you know what? I got a deer on your property. It ran over from here. Can I go get it? And nine times out of ten, these people are gonna say, yeah.
Yeah, I don't see someone.
Just, just don't gut it on my property, moving back to where you were. Alright, I, I think we have enough consensus on as for staff to move forward on this. At, at this point, I'd like to open up for, uh, public comment. If there's anyone in the, wants to make any statements, questions?
I've got a.
Yes, sir.
I've got a question for staff. Um, the old Bishop property.
Mm-hmm.
I was looking at GIS. It says that the buildings and vehicles and all that stuff falls on our property. Is that correct? Or where does that line go?
We, we pretty much gerrymandered the property lines to avoid all of their buildings.
Okay. So GIS is not right?
No, and, and if you do look at it, it's a, it's an amazing tool. But a lot of times when they do the overlay of the property lines onto the aerials, it's off.
Yeah, and that's why I just wanted to make sure that we didn't have a bunch of
No, we specifically.
Buildings that we now own.
We inherited a couple of pumps and that was enough.
Okay. Oh, one trailer, but that's.
Yeah, did we, did we get the trailer?
It is gone. I think it's, I think it's gone from Twin Cities as well, isn't it?
Oh, they tried to sell it, which I thought was humorous, but, might as well.
Yeah, Twin Cities did that for free.
Yeah, so it was just, I think they were trying to recover some, some cause Terry did a, Terry did a solid since we've been out there, I don't know, fifteen times in the last two years.
Alright, there's nothing more. Or adjourned. Hold back a few minutes. Yep, break.
Turtles.
Ready?
I'm ready.
Ready? Clock, I call this meeting to order. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, first up is the approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the amended agenda, which we received, which we got here, for June thirteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Second, two seconds. Any discussion on this? Second, second, any discussion on this? All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Those say no? Next is special presentation, library update.
That would be us. I'm assuming I'm supposed to come up here?
That's a good spot for you, yes, sir.
My name is Ray Peter. This is Norm Kittleson. We are your representatives to the Whitehall Community Library. We're doing fine.
That's what I hear.
Um, we had a clean audit this past year, just like we've had in the last several years. Uh, total revenues have exceeded expenses, so we're in the black. Uh, capital projects, we uncovered our boiler replacement last year and a new roof after twenty-some years. Uh, security cameras, new carpet and meeting room furniture are planned for this year. Along with whatever else surprises us out there in the world. Basically, that's it. Any questions? There's some wonderful numbers there in that sheet that he's handing out to you guys.
Yeah, it's just a little highlight sheet. Little, little brag literature, so. Ray, how was your usage over, uh, the COVID period? Did you guys see the increase in usage?
Oh, this last, uh, year, we're way up from previous years, about thirty percent.
It's a beautiful place and it's a real asset.
And of course during COVID, you know, everything went downhill a little bit, but not too bad.
But it rebounded pretty good then.
We did a lot more with the electronic stuff.
Good.
Do you guys have a way to track how the solar picnic tables are being used or how much they're being used?
Not as good as I was hoping. We can't narrow down off of catch marks wifi. The one that's got, uh, um, hotspot in it out of Whitehall Township, we can track because it's just that hotspot and we can track the usage. We can't off of just the general catch mark. We don't know who's plugging in. But have you seen the pictures of the guys doing their concerts out there with their electric guitars plugged in and their amps?
I just, I, I was just curious as to, you know, how much it was. I, I figured it would go over fine. I just wondered how much it was, how well it was going over.
And I think it'll be even more popular after the kids from the tech center get done building the, or removable fourth seat for that one downtown. It'll just wheel out of the way for wheelchair users and they'll back up.
Oh, cool.
And of course, the library book bike is being used quite a bit and looking forward to more events in town to, uh, show up at and hand out things to library kids. Any other questions?
Just a, a statement that I think, uh, we're very fortunate to have such a wonderful institution in our community and, and I think it's very well managed and I'm just delighted that the numbers are up and there's people out there that think libraries are, are old fashioned and people aren't using them, but this year has proved that
They are, oh, yeah.
That people are using them and they do value them, so thank you for all you've done to make these numbers.
You're quite welcome. Thank you.
All right. Any comments from anyone else on this subject? All right. Next up is the consent agenda.
I'll move for the approval of the consent agenda.
Second. Second, is there any discussion?
I've got one question, Scott, on the correspondence. The minutes from the planning commission. New business, two oh one West Colby, site plan extension. Can you tell me whether Zen, are they behind? Are we not gonna see any progress this year or?
Well, what, what that is, is our ordinance is, uh, make site plans valid for one year. And since they hadn't, they actually got their original site plan approval last spring and since that was expiring, they just came in for a renewal. So at this point, I talked to one of the, uh, investors and they still are hopeful to break ground early July. The Michigan Economic Development Corporation is gonna have a meeting the twenty-fourth of June. No, that's our pre-meeting. Um, we're meeting in the twenty-fourth cause they're gonna go to the MEDC at the end of the month for, um, some tax incentives from the state of Michigan. So they think that's the last piece. They have submitted a redesigned interior that adds residential units in place of the restaurant. I think at this point they're moving forward after trying with numerous potential restaurateurs and not landing one, that they're looking at some additional, um, residential units. So it'll be all residential and one commercial.
I mean, not that I'm against residential, not, I'm not against the residential, but I was really hoping that we'd have a nice restaurant down there.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. That was all I had.
Anyone else? All those in favor of the consent agenda, say yes.
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 Those?
No.
Consent agenda is approved. Next is messages from the mayor, city council and city manager. Scott? Anything?
Um, the one thing that I do have is, uh, and I'm forgetting all the acronyms, so don't quote me on, on the details, but um, there is a round of, uh, state grants that are available for placemaking. I don't think that's the latest German. Councilmember Holmstrom, you'd sent me some information. We actually joined in with the West Michigan Collaborative, uh, which is about five counties. We submitted the West Colby as one of the projects. The West Michigan group accepted that, so now I've got a week to get a whole ton of paperwork back to them. So that, um, it's fun work, uh, so that we would be included. I'm not sure what all projects are included, just that ours is included. And in theory, uh, they pre-designated the state of Michigan a certain allotment for each of the regions. So the right place out of Grand Rapids and the Grand Rapids Chamber of Commerce are spearheading it. But it also includes, uh, Lake Shore Advantage, which I think is the Ottawa County Chamber, as well as the Muskegon Economic Development. Greater Muskegon. I know. Yes, G nine, Greater Muskegon Economic Development. I can't even get the ones right that I know. Uh, so that, so that was pretty good news, is that we are included. And I think I did mention that the state of Michigan has rescinded eighty-eight thousand dollars towards Warner Street. We, uh, our understanding is that that was part of the federal increase in the debt limit between the Republicans and Democrats. I think the Republicans finally said, all right, we'll go along with increase in the debt limit, but any, uh, non earmarked funds, which is what they called, has to come back. Uh, that eighty-eight grand was earmarked for us, but we hadn't obligated it as yet because the project's, you know, another year out, so. I guess we had a little time to save a few extra bucks and cover that compromised money that was rescinded, so. Possibly good news and a little bad news.
How many feet does eighty-eight thousand dollars translate to?
Not much at all. But it's still, still a poke in the eye.
Um, I would ask, you gave us this technical memorandum.
Yes.
Is there any way you could distill that down to a short statement of what's going on with this? My, my interpretation is that the testing's been done, but there's no results yet.
Well, they, um, that's for Tannery Bay for the people in the audience and that's, uh, the quarterly report. They used to have to do monthly. Uh, they just, Tannery or, um, Whitehall Leather, Genesco has to provide quarterly reports, which is managed by Horizon Environmental. They just talk about any activity that's taken place down there as well as any of the test results. And those reports are always published before the test re, often before the test results are in, so there's always kind of a, a lag. There's been no, um, issues with any of the test results over the last year. Heather Hopkins is still the project manager on that. Uh, she's getting ready to retire, but you know, that project's only been going on for twenty-five years now, so can't blame her for that. And they do not have, the state's still working on revising their website so that the general public can go in and access those documents. Uh, but they're not there yet. Heather today, or email yesterday, said maybe by the end of the year. Anybody, anywhere can type in Whitehall Leather and get that report as well as access to the test results. But basically that three-page document says it's still a clean bill of health.
Uh, in the, in section four, we're, they're talking about the tracking of the disposal of the Tannery Bay materials removed where looks like six hundred and sixty-nine point two eight tons to date have been removed from just the north shoreline.
Correct.
Okay. And have, have they, do you know if they hauled any away? I know they have piles there, but have they?
I'm not sure if they've hauled any away yet. So there was a level of dewatering, plus I think the report refers to testing before can be hauled. They can probably be hauled just about anywhere, cause you've got different levels of landfills. And Coopersville, I think, is a class three, which can handle just about anything. And that's likely location of its relocation.
Do we know if they have any intention of any more removal or have they removed everything, at least from the shoreline that they found?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure. I know that Genesco was obligated to haul out a thousand tons. If that's the right number. I don't have the report in front of me. But Eastbrook Holmes has told them, you're gonna haul whatever we dig out, even if it's over a thousand. I think Genesco kinda said, all right, we'll, we'll take care of it. That was an estimate from twenty years ago.
It doesn't appear as though the files are getting any bigger.
No.
Looks like they, they. Okay. Okay, that's all I have on that. Let's go to council.
Yeah. Uh, nothing nice, sir.
I got two things.
Okay.
One is I don't know if our, if we made our contract with, uh, whoever it was, Muskegon Township for ordinance enforcement. I don't know if that's in effect yet or not or who to complain to, but, uh, we need to look at enforcing our grass ordinance.
Badly.
There are lawns all over town that have not even been mowed once this year.
What's your phone number?
We'll, we'll have the police, uh, take a look through the city yet this week. The contract, we've signed it. We've sent it back to Muskegon Charter Township. They have to take it to their board for approval and we haven't gotten it back as yet. As soon as they send it back, then they'll start doing the enforcement.
And the other thing I have is if we're gonna plan on doing, uh, more events at the North Mayor's Promenade, is there any way that the city could come up with some money to invest in a larger tent so there's a place for people to get out of the sun? I was down for the was it?
Feet in the street.
Feet. Yeah. And, uh, there were a few canopy tents up here and there, but, uh, you know, unless you move the chairs underneath them, the shade was very, very limited and it was, it just happened to be a really nice hot sunny day down there then and there, there wasn't a whole lot of place to get out of the weather.
No, and I, I guess my hesitation is the bigger the tent you go, the more anchorage you need.
Yep.
And that's always been a problem. They, you know, drive those big tent stakes in. We require them to fill them back up, but you know, they never get filled quite right, then you get the water in there, the.
I just wonder if we bought a bigger tent and.
Yeah, actually none of that.
The tent was the same size all the time and DPW was putting it up and taking it down all the time. Maybe we could figure out how to do some retractable anchors or something like that, uh.
So far, we've not done any of the tents. That's always been up to the event organizers.
Oh, okay.
And I know those tents are expensive when you run them out.
Definitely not cheap.
Or for a wedding reception.
Yeah.
Just, you know.
We can look at.
Something, something I just. The building did start providing a little bit of shade.
But not a lot.
That's all I have.
Sure. Nothing tonight.
Just one thing, going through town, uh, I happened to notice that, uh, our flags on the post are in looking in pretty bad shape. And I guess I'm wondering, uh, being downtown, can we approach Tifa as far as possibly generating some money to replace those?
Um, yeah, that's kind of an annual thing. I think DPW was starting to replace them today. Um, they, they were a little bit tied up with the new clock downtown. Um, I'll, I'll stop there, cause the mayor probably wants to use that.
Thank you.
But I'll, I'll double check with Ryan, but I think they started replacing the flags and the banners today, but we'll double check.
Yeah. Weather wasn't the greatest today. I didn't get out and walk, so. But yeah, they, the ones that were up there were looking kinda bad.
Yep.
Steve?
Yeah, a couple of things. Um, this latest Michigan Municipal League magazine we got with our stuff here. They talk about state budget surplus and municipalities and revenue sharing, which from what I remember when I was first on the council, I don't know, about fifty, sixty years ago or whatever. We used to get fairly substantial amount of our, our monies from state revenue sharing and then they cut it way back. And now it sounds like they're gonna start giving us back some of this revenue sharing. And, uh, I wondered if that is gonna be able to help us with this road project or if this, uh, is gonna go to certain things or, you know, I mean, I don't know if you read this article or not, but it sounds like a fairly substantial amount is gonna be going to cities and I just don't wanna counter chicken before they hatch, but.
Yeah, you're probably a lot more optimistic than I am. Because what the, what the state started doing is there's two. One is constitutional revenue sharing and statutory, which what was happening in years past is the state revenues went up, they were required to give us certain minimum amounts out of constitutional and they artificially lowered the statutory. So probably for about ten or fifteen years, we got the same exact amount of money, even though the state coffers were building significantly. Uh, we did get a boost, um, and Alyssa, I think is behind me, in twenty-one and twenty-two, and it was retroactive with, uh, the census and since we had a population increase, we got a nice little boost, but it's not gonna start paving miles of road by any means.
Oh, okay.
And, and again, they always do that based on, um, revenue forecasting. I think they do it four times a year. And there's always an adjustment at the end of the year and, you know, till the state fiscal year is done and we've got the checks cashed, then that's when my comfort level is.
That's when the Christmas bonus and or something. Something like that.
Yep.
Kinda.
And Alyssa does budget based upon those, uh, revenue forecasts that are generated by the state, but sometimes they're wrong. You know, if we all could forecast the stock market.
Right.
We wouldn't be sitting here.
Right. But yeah, we're, we're always hopeful. I think the current administration and the governor's office has been favorable in doing what they can.
Okay. That's it. Uh, the other thing is, uh, over this past weekend, the White Lake Area Sport Fishing Association put on a uh, fishing tournament for the kids. And boy, that was just awesome. There was a, just a ton of kids down there at Goodard Park and and, uh, of course I had three grandsons involved in the thing and they were, one of them said it was the best day of his life. Of course he won a few things, so. But anyway, I, I just wanted to kinda put a plug in for them. They were put out a call. They kinda would like to have more members in their, uh, sport fishing association and they do the fish boil later in August and they do quite a few things around to help with that resource in the area. And it's only like, I think he said it's ten dollars a year for a family to join the White Lake Sport Fishing Association. And I just wanted to put a plug in for them from my personal point of view. Just, it was just a really nice thing and I, I'm hoping at least they really try to keep the area, get the area cleaned up, everybody cleaned up after themselves. And I'm hoping they did a pretty good job because I didn't stay until everybody was gone, but it looked like it was pretty clean when they all left, so. Just wondered what, if there was any comments on that they did.
No, they, they've always done a good job cleaning up after themselves.
It was a great event. Lot of fun. That's it.
They, uh, from what I spoke with them, they had over two hundred kids registered to do that and, uh, they also do a annual highway cleanup, the Sport Fishing Association does, so they're, they're a great organization to have in this community, so I'm glad they're there.
I'm thinking probably fifty percent of the kids got prizes, along with everybody got a hoodie bag and they, they served, uh, pizza to everybody and that was really, really a good deal.
Keith?
Nothing this evening?
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I've got one thing I forgot. Yes, sir. Um, this last weekend, I went to Ohio, just for council's information. I went to Ohio and went through several cities in Ohio and one of them, and, and you guys know because I put out that big nine-page thing, all the stuff I like. Um, I found something else. Um, Scott's grinning over here. Um, essentially what they do is they have, um, dickle like this, they have banners for past, um, and they put them up, must be for Memorial Day, I leave them up for a while, of, um, military members from the past, um, with their picture, their service dates, or their passing date, and they put them up as flags. They're essentially old banners.
I've seen those.
And, um, I thought it was one city and then I just kept going through all cities in Ohio and, and everybody's got the same banner, so. I wouldn't mind seeing that down the road for us and something, maybe something as far as a White Lake, uh, thing between us and Montague. Um, see if we can get some buy-in from them and just put these people up. And I don't know how the process they work, how they get their veterans up there, but it's, it's pretty impressive. It's most, I mean, every flag has got somebody different on it and everything else, and I think it's both sides. I think there's one on one side and one person on the other side, so, um, it's, it's definitely humbling, to say the least, so.
All right. And for me, I, I am very happy to announce that our brand-new clock is up and working. It's, uh, if you don't know where it is, it's on the northwest corner of Mears and Colby or in front of Catch Brewery. It's a beautiful clock. I look forward to many years of correct time.
On both sides.
On both sides. So, yeah, it's, it's, it's great. I'm so happy. And that was basically a, a Tifa-funded project?
It was a Tifa-funded project, but I will have to put kudos out for the DPW staff that assisted in its, uh, installation as well as we borrowed a skytrack from Winburg Construction and, uh, Rick Blankenship from the district schools came over and actually ran this, uh, skytrack for us. So between the city, a private entity, and the schools and Verden, uh, clock company, it was, it was a pretty good project. Went up without a hitch.
Working together.
Yep.
How wonderful is that? I love it. All right. Our own representative on county board of commissioners.
Kim Seer, you're a county commissioner for this area. I live on Staple Road. Uh, I just have, uh, an announcement of a, an opportunity for, uh, for the arts here, uh, in this summer. Uh, it's called MART. It's a, uh, summer arts camp, uh, day camp in Muskegon for grades five through twelve, July thirty-first to August fourth. Uh, the things that are available to young people are, uh, drama, choir, orchestra, visual arts, songwriting, concert band, tech team training, photography, worship band, and more. Uh, registration, uh, goes through June twentieth. It's a special price through June twentieth and the registration closes on July the tenth, so.
Where would they register for that?
I'm not, well, I'm gonna leave this for you, okay? So that information, their website is the best place to go for that, so.
Okay.
Okay, any questions? Thank you very much.
Can the city post that on the city website somewhere?
Yes, sir. Yeah.
Um, Norm Kittleson, eleven oh five East Lew Street. I wanted to, uh, council member Brown's remarks regarding the lawns reminded me of something that I've been hoping I could share with you guys, so thanks for prompting my memory there, Scott. Um, in case you're not familiar, there's a, a worldwide movement called No Mo May, M-O-W. And, um, the idea is to allow lawns to grow through the entire month of May to help pollinators, uh, flying insects such as bees, other insects, and, um, animals that, um, forage through or actually, uh, use the pollen from plants, uh, dandelions and other things to, uh, help them gain their nutrition and it also spreads the pollen around. Pollinators worldwide are really under a lot of pressure right now for various reasons, so this is a movement that's going to help encourage the establishment of their colonies early in the season. Uh, so what municipalities all over the United States and the world are doing are saying, okay, for the month of May, we're gonna forego our, you know, uh, ordinances regarding lawn length, but, uh, to allow the, the, um, grasses and different plants to grow so that they can produce flowers that the pollinators can take advantage of. So I'm just putting it out there for you guys, something to consider. I let my lawn go as long as I could this year and about the third week of May, I'm just like, if I don't cut it now, I'm never gonna be able to get it done. I'd have to just pull in a flamethrower or something, but, you know. Thank you for not taking it to me, by the way. I really appreciate that, so. Anyway, just something to consider. So thank you, Scott.
I'm meticulously observed, No Mo May.
All right. Thank you.
You don't have a lot of lawn, so it's all good.
So No Rain May.
Right, well, yeah, I mean, yeah, Brown Lawn May.
And then, you know, I think that's something maybe for a future work session to talk about that, just some sort of city-sponsored event, but...
A contest so you can...
Is there any other public comments? Okay, then we will move on to old business. Do we have any old business?
No, sir.
No old business. We do have new business, Resolution twenty-three twenty-four, budget amendment number four.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-three twenty-four, budget amendment number four.
Second. Second in? There any discussion? Anyone have any? No? Roll call, please.
Holmeskam?
Yes.
Maloney?
Yes.
Connel?
Yes.
Sikkenga?
Yes.
Fiddleburg?
Yes.
Brown?
No.
Salter?
Yes. Resolution twenty-three twenty-four is approved. Last is public comment. Anybody? Yes? Yes?
Hi, um, I'm Tamara Horn. I'm a resident of the city of Whitehall. I wanted to share a piece of news just in case you missed it. In April, the city of Muskegon commissioned unanimously passed a climate resolution to eliminate harmful emissions by 2040. The city of Muskegon, Mayor Ken Johnson, said, quote, "I personally, I personally am excited to not only see how we as an organization can reduce our carbon footprint and become more climate mindful, but also how can we implement and modify policy to encourage development that is environmentally friendly," end quote. It's good news that the council, city manager, and department heads in Whitehall now have more neighboring cities to partner with as you make and implement your plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
One more thing.
Yes, sir.
And I'm done. Uh, just to make everybody aware and the public and everything else, the forest creatures will be showing up the twenty-second through the twenty-fifth next week.
Forest creatures?
Electric forest.
Electric forest?
So just to make you aware whether you like it or not, they're coming.
I thought we were gonna say another season.
You've got your ticket already, Steve? You got your ticket?
Well, Bart will have to hire two hundred more people.
I, I do have one more, uh, thing. The, uh, White Lake Fireworks Committee has now received their official five oh one C nonprofit status and will be putting, uh, donation cans throughout the community, looking for funds to continue to pay for this, uh, Fourth of July fireworks, so if you see those cans out there, please, uh, help us out.
Sounds good.
With that, nothing else? We're adjourned.